Today, it is 6:02 PM and I call to order the regular meeting of the Lancaster Select Board for Monday, March 20th, 2023. It is 6:00 PM. I am looking across to see if Ms. Turner is there. She does not appear to be. All right, let's remind everybody this meeting is being recorded, as well as being broadcast on Sterling Lancaster Community Television. We thank our great partners at SLC TV. And I will start with a roll call. Ms. Turner, we don't see you. Mr. Allison?
Here.
Mr. Kerrigan here. So, two to one. All right, we are going to next go to approval of the minutes. We have a review and take action on the following Select Board minutes, March 6, 2023.
I'm sorry, bringing up my agenda here.
All right. And then for those keeping track at home, we're going to skip around ever so slightly this evening on the agenda, but if we work hard, get it all done.
All right, I move to approve the Select Board's meeting minutes of March 6, 2023.
Second that, all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Again, okay, no alecs. Two, zero, zero. They pass. All right. Next, we are going to skip public comment for the moment and go into administration, budget, and policy. Item number one is the FY24 budget. We're going to have a brief presentation of current figures and standings led by our town administrator, Kate Hodges. I yield the floor to Kate.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, hi there. This is Kate Hodges. I'm the town administrator. And I began working for the town approximately a year ago. And while I can safely say that I had a solid list of tasks provided to me and initiatives I wished to champion for this wonderful community, the notion of proposing a budget override in any amount was far from my mind. But with that said, I believe the role of the town administration is to provide information, facts, and defined processes to those in the community in order for voters to feel like they have enough information to determine how they may wish to vote on any particular issue. Lancaster's budget process was completely revamped this year in the hopes of increasing knowledge and understanding for taxpayers relative to town and educational expenses. In July of last year, my office issued new budget instructions with the help of the Finance Director Cheryl Gariby to department staff and proposed a timeline to the Select Board relative to the new process. Throughout the summer and early fall months, requests for capital and general fund needs were explored. Capital expenses refer to those needs greater than $5,000, having a shelf life greater than 3,000, I'm sorry, greater than three years. Generally speaking, these are building, maintenance needs, software or equipment purchases, or acquisition and renovation of infrastructure. The general fund refers to tax dollars collected and used by both municipal operations and to fund school assessments. These amounts are what we owe to the schools, both Neshoba and Minuteman, and are assessed by the respective school districts, which we will explore shortly. So in the summer, we were projecting a $1.9 million deficit, with Neshoba estimating between a seven and a half to six and a half percent increase from the year's assessment forward, and Minuteman having a 5% increase. Capital requests at that time totaled 4.1 million, and it quickly became apparent that no tax money would be available for capital again in fiscal year '24. What projects are proposed through this year's budget are using funds through the ARPA program. Meetings, debate, and additional cuts continued through the fall and winter and have ultimately landed us, at least budget-wise, in the amounts that you will see both at town meeting and pending a Select Board vote, a vote of a proposition two and a half override, a vote in May of '23. The projected deficit is $1.1 million, with a requested override of between $1.2 and $1.3 million. The school increases have decreased from original projections. Thank you to those administrations for their effort. Neshoba is now at a 5.35% increase, Minuteman is at a 4.4. Um, next slide. I don't know why it's not coming. Oop. Okay. So, what is an override? The levy, or the amount that any one community made tax, may only increase by 2.5% from year to year as set by the legislature. An override allows a community to assess taxes in excess of the 2.5%, but may only be done by a ballot vote duly authorized by the Select Board during the town election. This year's election is scheduled for Monday, May 8th. So when folks go to the polls to cast their votes for the open positions on the various Lancaster boards and committees, you may also see a question on the ballot relative to approving or disapproving a prop two and a half override. The decision to ask for this of the already overburdened taxpayers was not come too lightly, and frankly, is as regrettable and as it is upsetting. However, Lancaster has been borrowing from its reserves for years to balance the budget, and each year this is done, the following year's deficit only increases. I realize the revaluation from last year has increased many people's taxes, and that coupled with inflation from all over and all other types of needs, including heat, electricity, food, makes this just one more bill. And we are truly sorry for that. I don't know another way out. This slide is simply meant to depict our free cash balances and the use of them over the past six fiscal years. What I want to make abundantly clear when you're seeing this graphic is that since fiscal year '21, or the year 2000, we've built up our free cash only to spend it down, either in whole or in part, such that going into this year, which you can see on the far left, we had only enough left in free cash to balance the budget. After appropriating this amount at last town meeting, which was $703,086, the town's free cash balance was at an all-time low less than $500,000. Again, this balance and the town's practice, at least for these past many years, of utilizing free cash to balance our budget ultimately hurts us financially, both in our credit rating and our borrowing capacity. So even though our financial status has been troubled for years, you're likely asking why this year. Just as homeowners have seen increases in their utilities and home costs, so has the town. 19.5% increases in municipal expenses are not related to personnel and are in direct correlation to the increase in electricity, fossil fuels, and building and road main materials. Additionally, all towns' labor unions, including the teachers' unions, are in contract negotiation. Neshoba's assessment is based on a five-year rolling average, and Lancaster's participation in the schools has increased substantially over the past three years in particular. Minuteman's assessment is in direct correlation to the previous four years enrollment. The FY24 amount reflects an increase in Lancaster students since 2022, which was a total of 10 between those times. At approximately $31,000 per student, that's a $310,000 increase just for this year alone. In terms of the line-by-line analysis, while Lancaster's revenues are only increasing by 3 and 3/4%, expenses average higher than that. I've been asked, didn't we just approve more business development in North Lancaster? And while it is true that several of the special town meeting articles that passed have the potential to positively impact Lancaster's tax base, the state sets parameters relative to how towns can measure new growth and to what extent we can realistically set our maximums to. Therefore, when setting our new growth estimate for FY24, we are only permitted to use a number equal or less than the previous year's receipts. Since we're only a little more than halfway through the FY23 year, we budgeted conservatively at $100,000. Again, the $100,000 is the average amount that we've collected in years past, with the exception of FY21, which had an additional $100,000 received from the sale of certain buildings at Atlantic Union College. But those were one-time receipts. Neshoba's assessment amounts to each of the communities, again, is based on a five-year rolling average, and it's relative to each community. The district agreement states, quote, "A member town will pay the same percentage as the town's foundation enrollment average for the preceding five years." Foundation enrollment is based on a Mass. General Law, Chapter 70, and Lancaster's average in 2014 was 948 students. The projection for next year is 1,014. Said differently, Lancaster's five-year average enrollment percentage has increased by 0.26%, where Bolton and Stowe's have both decreased. Similar to town expenses, Neshoba is seeing an increase in utilities of nearly 11%. Wages for the unions are also up, along with insurance and benefits. All of these portions contribute to Lancaster's assessment, which is three-parted: the minimum local contribution, which is set by the Department of Early and Secondary Education, or DESI; the variable assessment amount, which I just described; and the operating and desk assessments, which in FY24 include an older debt that we're still paying for the high school. There are people trying to get in, Jason. Neshoba's administration has been working diligently over the past several months to get Lancaster's assessment numbers down to an amount that would be considered more economically feasible. I provide this slide from the district's budget presentation from earlier this month because I think it's important to note that the school is also critically analyzing its amounts and coming to us with an amount which seeks to ensure they can meet their minimum obligations without unnecessary overhead. In other words, they are working with us, and they're working hard. In early January, Neshoba was projecting a 7.65% increase in Lancaster's assessment. In working with us to refine their needs, the school has reduced 4.3 FTEs, or full-time equivalents, for their teaching staff, two FTEs for support services, and 1.2 FTEs from administration. This, coupled with some other cost-saving measures, has Lancaster's final assessment only increasing 4.76, or 3% lower than they initially projected. Sorry, it's being cranking. Okay. Minuteman's assessment to Lancaster is based upon a four-year rolling average, as mentioned prior. Lancaster's rolling average has increased by 5.3% in that timeframe. Despite an increase in operating assessment, the per pupil assessment remains relatively consistent with past years. Minuteman's current breakdown of students in each grade in Lancaster for this year has 15 in the ninth grade, 16 in the 10th grade, 11, I'm sorry, 14 in the 11th grade, and 13 in the 12th grade. So as predicted, the shifts in enrollment are what leads to the increasing assessments with the member towns, and Lancaster is no exception. FY24's assessment is 13.78% above that of fiscal year '23, and their total budget is $25,481,911. Lancaster's portion for FY24 is $2,379,621. That is an increase of about $200,000. I realize that that is a lot of information to process, and likely there are many questions. I'd imagine a top question, because it's one that I've been hearing, is what happens if the override doesn't pass? So for the school, a $400,000 to $450,000 cut in Lancaster's assessment equals a $1.3 million cut district-wide. This cannot be accomplished without deep and highly impactful cuts to programs, teachers, support staff, and should these come to fruition, the risk that Neshoba would not meet its educational standards as set by the state and our school committee. Currently, our deficit is about $1.1 million. So in short, we'd have to cut that amount from the budget. Because this question has been asked numerous times, and because I believe it's important for people to understand what a cut of this size may mean to municipal services, I asked a few department heads to attend tonight in order to answer this question. They know their operations and their cost analyses better than anyone, and they are the subject matter experts in each of their fields. I'd like the ability to ask them the question, and starting with Chief Everett Moody. He's going to come to the podium, not the invisible podium. So Chief, the question is, what does a $500,000 to $550,000 cut to town services likely mean for you and your department?
Currently, Lancaster has three sergeants, seven patrolmen, and myself. As a team, we provide 24/7 proactive and preventative crime patrol. Our response services are safe, efficient, and effective, using proven best practices based on occurrence staffing. Last year, public safety officers responded to over 13,000 calls for service. Some are quick and require little or no follow-up, and others require week-long investigations. Roughly 20% of those calls require two or more officers to be dispatched. This is based on industry standards and accredited policies and proven practices. There's no way around it. Making cuts to staff will ultimately put residents and officers at greater risk in the form of longer response times and less than adequate numbers of personnel out on the streets. Hope that adequately answers the question.
That's an excellent answer. Sorry, I gotta go over to the polls, so. Chief Mike Hanson for the Fire Department, same question. What does a $500,000 to $550,000 cut to municipal services mean for your department? What would it mean?
For the Fire Department, it would automatically mean cutting staff, which would reduce response times. Earlier this year, we went through some exercises from actual incidents. We currently have two staff in the station and myself, Monday through Friday during the day. If we were to cut that staff, we're looking at an average of 14-minute response time to any incident. Currently, we're at a six-minute response time with staff in the station. We're primarily a call department, and with nationwide call volunteer departments that are taking ahead on retention, we are no different, and we don't have the members that we used to that worked in town that live in town to respond. So we could be relying on mutual aid, which could take up to 25 minutes to get apparatus. That would also mean cuts to our maintenance programs, which are required to do every year on an annual basis to keep all of our equipment tested and certified under NFPA and OSHA standards. If that can't be accomplished, our ISO rating, which is our insurance rating for the town, we're Class 9 now, we would go up, which would possibly raise people's homeowners insurance. So across the board, it would affect our ability to respond to the town's people for incidents, critical things, inspections, and anything else we do on a daily basis. One thing to note is, you know, there was a note on the board about contracting out private ambulance service. We looked at that a few years ago. To bring a private company in, an ambulance company, would cost about $1 million a year. And that was probably six, seven years ago we looked at that. So it's really no cost savings to bring in a private service to be committed to the town of Lancaster. So overall, this would be a serious hit to the residents for the public safety service we provide.
Thank you, Chief. Joe Muley, who's the Director of the Thayer Library.
Thank you for having me. I just want to say first of all that I am here as a friendly public servant, and I know all of my colleagues are too. It takes, we get no pleasure after telling the citizens of Lancaster bad news. Many of us have been here decades, and it's been our pleasure to serve you. And all of the citizens that I've dealt with, and I'm sure all my colleagues, have been very appreciative to what it is that we do. And we hope they realize the integrity that we all have to make sure that we give the best value we can with the money we're given. This is a value proposition, and we make every dollar go as far as it can. But I'm appearing before you, and again, this is from a friendly public servant, about the consequences to citizens if the library doesn't certify with the Commonwealth. Libraries have to go through certification processes. There are nine standards that libraries must meet. These are floors. They aren't thresholds. So whether or not the library meets or exceeds something, it's the goal of any public library to exceed the threshold as much as it can to the benefit of citizens. The standard that I want to talk to you about today is what's known as the municipal appropriation requirement. It's simply an average of the last three-year library appropriation multiplied by 2.5%. So in fact, that trails the levy. So it's not 2.5% every year. It's the average of three years is 2.5% more. So there are material consequences if we don't certify with the state that I'm hoping you'll agree with me is something we want to avoid. The first and foremost is that we won't get $18,000 in state aid. And that's important because we stretch the appropriation as far as we can, but we need more money. And the state aid award helps us make ends meet and gives us a little bit more space to provide services. We'll no longer qualify for grants. We've just gotten $15,000 in grants from the state. Interestingly, 25 years ago, we won a $3 million grant for the building, expansion, and renovation. Hours will decrease if an override doesn't pass. That's just a simple fact because we're going to have to let staff go. So an example of that is Saturdays will only be provided in the summer. We provide them all year right now. Programming services, which people in the town have grown to expect and they do enjoy, would necessarily be different because whatever staff is left is going to be tasked to do things like circulation services and just keeping up with the operations of the library. Local libraries, and this is the thing that people find most disturbing, local libraries are not required to lend to the Lancaster resident. This is a reciprocity agreement libraries have amongst each other throughout the Commonwealth. This is, a good example of this is about 20 years ago, we had an override. And Lunenburg, Lemonster, and Bolton voted not to lend to Lancaster residents. Those weren't the only towns, but those might be the most pertinent to Lancaster residents who frequent these libraries. We encourage our residents to use other libraries because they each offer so different things. So the other thing that people might be disturbed to hear is libraries are not required to fill our holds. We, last year, filled 13,000 holds to Lancaster residents. Those are books that come from other libraries to here that our Lancaster citizens request. Those libraries don't have to send us anything. And if this becomes the case, one of the first things we may cut is our membership to CWMS, which would effectively shrink what the residents can do. They'll be limited to just the Thayer Memorial Library, as excellent as it is. So one final note might be worth considering. The library, if this override doesn't pass, will have the dubious distinction of failing to certify with the state alongside the towns of Alfred, Monroe, New Ashford, and Savoy. The reason we would be distinct from them is that they never apply for state aid. We would maybe be the only library in the state that did certify because their town lacked the will to pass the override. So this is not an everyday occurrence with public libraries, and I hope that we can continue the level of services we all provide and go back to, remain the Lancaster we all love to serve and be a part of. Thank you.
You'll indulge me. We have Kelly Dolan, who's the Director of Health and Human Services, on the Zoom call. Kelly, if you want to unmute and bring your screen up.
Thank you. Can you see me? Or can you at least hear me?
I can hear you.
All right, there you go. So, thank you, Kate. As you all may know, the point and purpose of the Health and Human Services Department coordinates all townwide social services, public health, and recreational programs for Lancaster residents, businesses, and its visitors. We are committed to building a better Lancaster by positively impacting the people, having hand on policy, and improving the well-being of residents and businesses every day. That being said, I wanted to showcase a little bit of data and say that since my onboarding in October, we've had 5,419 folks frequent our facility. We've added 28 new programs for our seniors, and our social services department has assisted in 418 outreach activities. A special shout-out as well to the Fire and Police Department, who've already presented tonight, because they have also helped us in some of those outreach activities. Our recreation program has also been able to add 18 new programs for our community members and their children, and we've had over 181 registrants for the programming so far. We've also had 22 rentals, which include events, special meetings, birthdays, and sports clubs. With such a cut, I just want to state that the town will lose out on social services, recreational services, and a large part of what brings a community of Lancaster residents together. Thank you.
And lastly, we have our Community Development and Planning Director, Jasmine Farinachi.
Thank you very much, Kate. I appreciate it. The Community Development and Planning Department works to aid residents and developers, as well as the Planning Board, Zoning Board of Appeals, and Conservation Commission in navigating our bylaws, Massachusetts general laws, and other integral plans for Lancaster. Hats to the Community Development and Planning Office would result in degradation of services to residents on multiple levels. This cut would eliminate our full-time conservation agent, which would force the community to search for a conservation consultant. This will result in longer times for reviewing applications, longer times to issue conservation permits, and longer wait times to receive building permits, as those are required to receive conservation review before approval. This would also cost the town a hefty hourly consultant rate. We would be forced to also reconsider our administrative assistant position, which would result, again, in a delay of information for residents, as we won't have the resources as readily available to answer questions and aid with information requests. This would be a delay of processing applications for the Building Department, Planning Department, Zoning Board of Appeals, and a delay of issuing all permits from this department. This decrease would impact our residents on multiple levels and may deter future necessary growth in Lancaster.
Thanks, Jasmine. So that is a handful of some of the larger budget drivers on the municipal side. There obviously would be, you know, other cuts that we could explore, including in finance and town clerk, but I think it's important that you hear from the people who are doing that work. So I'm just going to share my screen one more time just to finish up where we were. It doesn't seem to be. Ah, okay. So our last iteration of the budget had an override amount projected of totaling $1.3 million. At this time, I believe it's possible to further reduce that amount by another $100,000 based upon three things. First is that as of March 9th of this year, so just a couple weeks, a week ago, the Fire Union in Lancaster has decertified, meaning that they are no longer part and represented by the Teamsters Union. This now has the firefighters and EMTs falling under the town's personnel code and bylaw, and wages are included in the unclassified classification and comp schedule. Those salaries are set at 2%, as we talked about in the budget. So shall the firefighter and EMTs, reducing the amount that we held in place because of what pending contract negotiations had said. The second is the development of the proposed 696 Fort Pon Road has passed through the permitting stage, and additional revenues from that have been received and are projected to provide additional resources in this fiscal year. Remember, we can only count receipts received in FY23 when figuring new growth for FY24. So while we can't count revenues that we've already received prior to FY23, we can reasonably assume that a greater number, perhaps, than the $100,000 originally estimated in local receipts in new growth will be available from that development. The town also projects that the 32 rental units being permitted off Deer Shorn Road and the preliminary subdivision plan from Capital Group relative to the North Lancaster parcels and the anticipated definitive subdivision plan following the MEPA review for the Capital Group will also bring in revenues. But generally speaking, I believe in estimating conservatively and counting only cash in hand. hand. But the strength and momentum of these three projects, coupled with the union situation, allowed Cheryl and I a reasonable assurance that we could see the additional revenue prior to 630 of this year. That reduces the override amount to 1.2 million, which equates to plus or minus $450 a year for the average single-family household or $37.50 a month. I understand that that to some is insurmountable, but that is the situation that we are in at this time. So I think some important dates to consider, as I've had lots of conversations with all kinds of different residents asking things. The override can only be approved, as I said, at a ballot vote, meaning we will discuss it at town meeting. We will hear from people and we want to hear from people and have a healthy debate. Any vote that's taken there is perfunctory because it has to go in front of the ballots. So please don't think that if you vote one way or the other at town meeting that that negates the need for you to vote in the town election. We'll be holding a budget forum, which will have most of the department heads available as well as members of the Finance Committee and Select Board and other boards and committees who want to be there. I encourage people to go online and look at the budget book, develop questions. We're here to answer those questions. As Mr. Muley said, we want to answer the questions. We want to provide information so that you feel comfortable in how you're going to vote. That is this Thursday, the 23rd at 6:00 PM. We're still figuring out the location. It'll either be in this room, in the library or in the old town hall. And I will make sure that we're putting that everywhere and online. Tonight, we'll be discussing a date for the Warren Forum, which is similar to the one that we did before, the original special town meeting in November, where we will be discussing the nature of the Warren articles. People can ask questions and clarity on the language that's there. Town meeting this year is Wednesday, May 3rd. That's a change from the General Monday as voted by the Select Board due to a scheduling conflict with Sterling Lancaster Television. That's at MRE and if needed, the Luther Burbank School at, starting at 7:00 PM. And then again, the town election is Monday, May 8th. And this says at and AM, but it's supposed to say at 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. So I will make sure that that's fixed online before I post this. Anybody that goes on to the town website, lancasterma.gov, if you were to go on to the Select Board and Administration, there's a tab on the left-hand side that says FY ' '24. The budget documents are there. There's an executive summary that's from me that's there and I'll be posting these slides and some other information there as well. So be checking. And that is what I have. Mr. Chair.
Thank you for a very, thank you and the department heads for a very thorough presentation on the budget. And thank you and Cheryl for the continuing work you're doing to get that numbers as low as we could get it. I don't have any questions. I do, I do want to say to folks that we have seven weeks between now and May 8th and a lot of questions out there in the community, as Kate has said. I'm here, I know Jason's here, I would assume Alex is, to answer as many questions as we can, but to be a conduit for questions. If you have questions, feel free to go online on the town webpage and email me and I'll either answer them myself the best I can or get them to Kate. But this is a time to ask as many questions, be as inquisitive as you can be because once this election happens on May 8th, there's no going back and you've heard from the town departments of what the impact would be if this weren't to pass. So I encourage everybody to take the opportunity to do the research, work with us to get your questions answered so that when you go to the polls on, on May 8th that you're as informed as you can be and that we've all done our, our research. Mr. Allison, do you have any comments, thoughts, questions?
I have a question, if I may?
You may.
Follow-up question.
Sure.
Chief Hanson, if it's okay?
Sure.
Or if you want to grab the podium again.
From an Owl perspective, please do.
So I just want to go back over something I think I heard. So what I think I heard is that if we, if our response times become longer, that there may be a direct financial impact to our residents via their homeowner's insurance?
Yes.
So I'm going to wrap that a little bit. So if, if the town decides not to pass the override, it still may cost residents more money per month because of the increase in response times for residents?
Yes.
And, and, and do we, I mean, what do you have any, do we have any idea of what those numbers look like? Is it $5 a month, $10 a month?
I do not. I've been trying to look. I've been going through the ISO file and they set our insurance rating based on several things. With a cut like that, it's not just response times. It's the annual servicing of all the equipment, pump certification, ladder certification, hose testing, SCBA. If we don't have those records, those things aren't maintained, it takes points away from your ISO rating. And from what I could find, each individual insurance company is notified. And then it's the insurance companies themselves that would actually reach out to you as a homeowner and say, hey, the classification has gone up. We're looking at raising your insurance rate.
So if, if that's something, you know, speculating here, but if that's $10 a month or $20 a month, that's $120 to $240 per year just because we didn't pass the override. Just wanted to make sure I understood that.
Yes.
And that's a, you know, an offset there. Thank you. That was my only question.
And it's, I mean, response times not only have a financial impact, they have a real life impact on people's lives.
Yes.
And I will say, I'm, I've always been incredibly proud with both fire and police to say that even in a small town that is very well spread out with limited resources, our response times, I'd put them up against anybody of an alike community. And I, so I, I just want folks to realize there is, and that's a very important point to make financially, but there's a real life point about response times. If it goes from six minutes to 14 minutes, that's an awful lot that can happen in your own life and your family's life.
A medical emergency, like a cardiac event, your first few minutes are your most crucial to get your heart pumping air. And with modern day construction, a fire doubles in size every minute that it goes unnoticed or, you know, a response isn't there.
Thank you.
And I think that the last time I checked, we have more than two responses a day on average. Is that right? Call rate?
Yeah, we're probably up to three or four on average a day.
For the fire and EMS?
Yes.
And you all are on the streets all day long.
And when it comes to like a fire, like how, how quickly does a fire grow? Like per minute?
It, it doubles in size every minute.
Chief, can I ask you a question? Just based on, I remember the last time we did an override, we were preparing for the last time in the late 90s. And one of the scenarios we had involved us not having coverage from, I think it was going to be, which I thought was interesting that we declared this to the whole world that we wouldn't have police coverage from midnight to eight, I think it was Saturday night to Sunday morning or something like that. I would assume with the limitations you're talking about, you, you have to make coverage decisions and how that's going to impact not just investigations and whatnot, but road work as well and being out on, on patrol. I'm assuming there'd be an impact at least on the ground that could get covered in any given week.
Well, absolutely. Staffing is going to be affected. And one of the, the major effects of that is our mutual aid agreements that we have with our neighboring communities. And they're, they're exactly that. They're mutual aid. They're not, they're not there to provide initial coverage. They're there to provide extra and backup coverage. The protocols request that they come and meet with the senior officer who's in the community and work with us. Once we are unable to perform the payback, sort of speak, mutually aid's not going to keep coming. It would, it would be crazy for residents in other communities to be paying for services here in Lancaster.
It's not called a one-way aid.
And that's, that's the same thing with the state police response. I know that when we looked at it back in 2003, you know, that was one of the rumors that had gone around and, and the previous chief at the time had been notified by somebody from the state police and said, we, we do it again because of mutual aid. It's just an agreement that we have here in the state. If, if you guys do not have services, we'll figure something out, but understand there will be a bill associated with it. That very event is going on right now in Greenfield, Mass. In fact, the state police are handling the midnight calls. They've moved their, their big emergency response van over there and they are there set up, they've set up shop for 30 days. And after that, we'll see what's going to happen. So we're, we're watching that closely, but it is not something that we can count on long-term.
Great. Thank you. Appreciate it. Joe, I wish I had a question for you.
No worries.
No, but it's, the services you all provide are critically important and the cuts with your budget being as limited as it is can be, can be significant. And what I learned recently was, weren't we the library that started the library share program or something? Aren't those boxes that are, somebody told me that? Well, yeah, go ahead. Sorry. Yeah, I guess I'm not just chatting with you. I did have a question, turns out, yeah.
Yeah, just like.
But it would be a shame if, if, if what I'm hearing from you, the library share program is one of the biggest, one of the impacts on somebody's.
Yeah. We have a long tradition of sharing with other libraries going back to the 19th century, but this in particular, we were one of the founding libraries of CWMars.
You can see the boxes. If you go to the Thayer Memorial Library, there's some of the boxes right there, right on the, right? You're looking at me like I'm crazy. Okay, great. No, yeah, I saw them when I was there for the.
Crazy.
Oh, yeah, but for different reasons.
They both can be true.
That is true. Thank you. Not mutually exclusive. Well, I think we're done with you. Regretting my question already. Do you have any other?
I'm good. Thank you.
And again, I know we glossed over it. I don't want anybody that's listening at home or seeing this again to, to think that we aren't putting any stock into the cuts that would have to come at the school level.
Yes.
It just isn't appropriate for me to opine on what would happen, but I just want folks to understand because it's a, it's nuanced, especially when it is a regional district, that a cut in one town equates to an overall cut district-wide.
Right.
So to reduce Lancaster's assessment, say by 400,000, that's 1.3 million for the district.
Right.
Which also includes our portion of the high school. So, you know, that's not insignificant.
Let me ask you another question then, because I've heard this from a few folks and I want to make sure I've, I've got it right. So I'm going to see if my answer matches up, but miraculously, well, not miraculously, say we do all these draconian cuts, say we take some money out of free cash that we shouldn't be taking and say we convince the school to give us some relief and we magically wipe away this year. We cut services, we've had the school cut services, we've taken away free cash. My understanding is then next year, the dollar amount we're asking for is far in excess of the dollar amount we're asking for this year. Is that?
Yeah. Cheryl, are you still on and are you able to answer that question? I don't know if you heard it, but essentially Cheryl went through the exercise of projecting out what our deficit would be since two years ago, it was 250. This year, last year it was 790. This year it's 1-1 to 1-2.
Once you hit that magic million number, the jump just gets extraordinary year to year to year. The last I looked, the deficit for '25 would be 1.6.
Okay. That's, that was short of the number in my head too, probably placed there by you, Cheryl. So thank you. And that's the thing which folks should think about. We've just talked about really cutting to the bone on a lot of critical services and the impacts negative that they are to the town. Say we're able to do that and somehow survive it and do the cuts at the school, it's still coming back to 1.6 million more dollars next year and then there's nothing to come. Yes.
Yeah. Can you, can you talk a little bit about if we emptied free cash, what that would have meant to our bond rating?
Right.
Yes. So I was able to go through because I was somewhat anticipating that that might be a topic for discussion, at least on Thursday. So the idea of a high school coming up is coming up fast and furiously and.
A high school renovation, rebuild, in case folks aren't tracking that.
I'm sorry, a high school renovation, rebuild. It's, they're in the stages of finishing up what the final number was going to be, but they're tossing around a number that with state aid would have each community on the hook for about $40 million. Is that true, Cheryl? Is it still around 40?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So a 30-year loan at 5.59%, which is what we would get if we kept our AAA3 bond rating, has the, the average household tax bill increasing by $468 a year based on this year's assessment. That is, you know, again, with a AAA3 bond rating, so that isn't even a, a great interest rate, quite frankly. It's 5.59. You know, I could hope that we would do better. Depleting free cash such that it has basically anything under a million or depleting a stable, what is left in the stabilization fund, which incidentally is only the interest that has been accruing, which Cheryl was good enough to make sure that we had that for this number of years, would increase at least by 3%. So we're talking about, you know, taking 460 and turning that into close to $900, $950 for the average household. And remember, while that's excluded debt, it still, you know, will impact us for a 30-year loan. There are numbers that we can run for a 20-year, but I think it's important to know. And I, I know that a lot of people have asked, well, what happens if we just don't accept the school? And that is a very real possibility. The path there, which has been defined here by those committees is, you know, you, you vote it and then it goes on to the ballot. And if Lancaster votes it down, but the other, another community does not, or both others do not, they then do a district-wide ballot and that's a one-for-one, meaning that, you know, it doesn't matter what percentage Lancaster is of the Nishoba family. What matters is each household is counted as one. And so I think that there is a very real possibility of it passing, even if it doesn't pass, you know, easily and if it doesn't pass here in town. And that's okay too, but I, I do think that not planning for that would be a mistake and it would be a financial mistake, which in the end would be extremely expensive to the town. And incidentally, just looking at the slides that I just said, Lancaster's student population has risen considerably more in relation to the other two in the district. Does that answer your question?
That does.
Thank you.
It's a long one.
It's a good one. All right. Any other questions?
No. So in, so part of this, we, we talked about the public forum. I guess I'm, I'm looking for you all. We're, we're all going to be in person. We're going to be here. I understand there's, there is a hearing that is in here.
Yeah.
That, that is going to be using the Owl.
Yes.
So we have some ability to set up something via Zoom perhaps, but I can't guarantee that the audio is going to be great. I definitely can't guarantee it's going to be great next door, which is why we, we're looking to Mr. Muley to host us. But.
I mean, if we can get Sterling Lancaster to cover it, then I can at least get broadcast a few more times so folks can hear the explanation. So we'll do the best we can, I suppose, right?
So in-person slash broadcast?
Yes. Yes, Mr. Muley.
Library would, personally, be happy to host, but the largest meeting room we have only sits 68.
That's Dexter Room?
That's the Dexter Room, right? Just so you're aware when you make your plans.
Yeah, the last, the last one we had, I don't think in-person we had that many. We have a couple of dozen maybe coming in and out, but that's, that was to me the room that I thought made the most sense.
If we have it at the library, will you bring those snacks that we had, those pastries that we had of the legislative brunch?
Not required.
Kind. Those are kind.
Yeah, those are.
Just, that's a good point. Those are paid for by the Friends of the Thayer Memorial Library, so maybe they will.
Thank you. So yeah, I think that's, if we can do it at the Dexter Room and if we can get it recorded, at least on, and broadcast on SLCTV, then doing the best we can.
All right.
All right. So that takes us where?
Well, we talked about the override process and budget failures in the presentation.
You did.
So unless there's any questions specific on that. And then the next one is Mr. Allison's.
Ah, indeed.
Annual town meeting?
The mediation and cost-cutting initiatives that we can make right away.
Yeah. So. Yeah. So, um, questions are around, you know, what, what kind of cost-cutting can we make with respect to, I think I brought up, uh, paper, phones? You know, what options do we have to go more digital? Not only will it save money, uh, but it will be more greener for the town. So Steve, thinking, thinking that through, one thing that the select board can do at a minimum is only have digital packets. Uh, for, for us, I think right now it's optional. Um, you know, I, I would want the entire board to be here if we voted on something like that.
Yeah.
Uh, but I would love to take it up, especially with all department heads here. I'd love to lead by example.
Yes.
And, and, and share that if there's opportunity for us to cut, cut costs, even if it's onesies, twosies here and there, I think that is the leaning in that, that we need to do in Lancaster. Um, you know, it's not just about the override, but it's also committing to, you know, doing what's necessary, um, to save as much taxpayer money as possible.
I agree and I'm on, on board for any ideas you might have. Um, the paper saving, I think makes a ton of sense.
So at a minimum, we can.
See if our colleague on there.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't know. So at a minimum, uh, it probably wouldn't be fair of us to.
Yeah, like we can, we can.
Our colleague here.
We can add it to our agenda.
But at a minimum, my proposal would be that all select board materials, unless required by law or statute to have them printed, uh, would be, would be digital. And, you know, I think we can have conversations about maybe opting in for residents, about notifications only being via, via digital. That's probably a longer conversation and one that is gonna require more thought, but you know, this is a, this is a win-win, I think, uh, with respect to not only saving money, uh, but also, uh, you know, being greener for the environment.
I agree. I would say, I think being, uh, conserving where we can on paper allows where we must uh, use it to meet the needs of the population that Kelly serves. For instance, the senior center, some may, there may be more need there. So if we're able to save here, we can um, at least continue to meet some of the need there. Um, uh, and I think it makes all the sense in the world to, um, be judicious in how we spend those resources.
So maybe we can put that on, on, uh, maybe the next agenda and, uh.
Uh, yeah, we can. The next meeting is next Monday, just at noon time to close the warrant, yes? Um, so we can add it to that because we only have one item on that. Um.
I would agree.
Yeah, then, uh, no time like the present to act on it. Um, fantastic. Okay. Um, discuss board, but we already, we already did this, discuss board process. No, we did not. To approve or disapprove the override question and amount.
Sorry.
The board has to. Uh, my understanding is we have to, um, pick an amount and, uh, approve or disapprove an override question and then put it on the ballot for May 8th, but Kate's gonna explain that to us.
I apologize.
In a matter of moments. There she is.
I don't, I hope you're not getting.
It's quite hard.
It's just a cold.
I'm just gonna scoot over here.
So the, the idea would be, uh, that the board would theoretically want to take that idea up before closing the warrant.
Sure.
So if you wanted to wait until the 27th to do it, which is next Monday, that would just be the first item on the agenda would be to discuss that and vote to put it on or not. And then if the vote is to put it on, that amount I would then plug in to the warrant that you would have ready.
Right, yeah.
We would just get it. The draft would just have a sort of a X on it. And we'd fill that in. If you did not, we would have to propose uh, an alternate budget that essentially cuts 1.1 million and that would be brought forward.
Yeah.
Um, and then we would just strike.
Yeah, I would have loved to have agreed on it tonight, but I do think it's something we should have the full board at. Um.
Do we have time for that? Sorry if I interrupted.
On Monday?
Yeah.
We, I mean, we've, as Kate explained, we've just been discussing the budget since July of last year. I mean, I feel like we have time for it because for me it's.
Procedurally, I mean, like, is there enough time to print every?
Oh, yeah. I think you're saying the 27th we do, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it would be as simple as I'll, I'll prepare articles for.
Yes.
You're gonna vote to include it or vote not to include it. And from there, away we go.
Yeah, I, I would agree. We want the board to be whole when we.
Yeah. So let's add that as the first item on the 27th. We're asking a lot of our quick half hour meeting, but we're gonna get it done. Um, pass the stretch, pass 30 minutes, it can.
And for the record, um, I do not believe that we will be any lower than the 1.2. Again, I don't think we can.
There's no more blood to squeeze out of that stone. God.
And that's the 27th of noon?
27th of noon time.
And I know that the finance committee is meeting tomorrow. Um, unfortunately, that's the date I said I couldn't go, so I'm, I'm not able to participate. I know Cheryl has got it more than handled, but, um, you know, I don't, I don't know what their determination will be. Um, is it possible to see if Sue is on here? She's not.
I don't see her.
So, um, maybe, maybe Mr. Trussell, if he can hear me. Um, so finance committee is supposed to, by the, by the town code, uh, make a recommendation on, um, any article to come before town meeting with a financial implication. I'm not sure whether you all are doing that tomorrow or whether you're gonna have a meeting either on the 27th or prior to the 27th when the warrant closes. Um, but anyway, if the chair can just let me know.
Dick, do you know? I saw you unmute. Mr. Trust? All right, well. Guess we'll hear from you.
Could be a technical difficulty.
Yes.
So I will, um, I will email that over to Mr. Trussell too, just so he can forward it along to whoever needs it.
You should probably send it to the entire finance.
I, well, I, I did do that, but.
Okay. Um, next item is annual town meeting, May 3rd, uh, 2023, beginning at 7:00 PM.
So you skipped public comment.
I did skip public comment. Would you like me to take that up?
Well, no, it's up to you. I just wanted to remind you in case anybody.
I, I remembered that I intended to go back. I just wanted to see if there's, while we're hot to trot on.
Ah, okay. So I, I have all these. We can do that.
Yeah, let's just do annual town meeting and then we can go back to public comment.
Okay. Let's see. Annual town meeting, so I can just bring up. You're with me?
All right.
Okay. All right. So here we are. Um, so again, this is a draft. Uh, there's sort of highlights and notes to myself in there, so, um, but effectively, uh, the first article is the operating budget, which we just discussed, so I'm not sure we need to go back over that, but I will have a Article 1A and Article 1B. Uh, this says an additional 1.3 in real estate and, um, personal property taxes with the board's, I, I suppose, permission. Um, I can do a 1.2 and a 1.3 and you all can decide then oral and then.
I mean, I think if you feel that we're solid with the 1.2 number, we should go with the 1.2. That's just by you.
Uh, we're gonna only do this once, so. Get it right.
Okay. So I will prepare A and B, one for, uh, that requires an override of 1-2 and one that requires no override. Um, the district agreement, um, from Nishoba, which, um, has been circulating for some time. The school committee voted to accept that, uh, two weeks ago. I sent that to the board. It's online. Um, it's lengthy, uh, so we will have, um, some copies that the school is going to print that are there, but it can be found, um, via this link, um, or on our website. Um, and there is a transmittal letter that highlights the changes. So if someone's just wants the, the highlights. Um, so that's Article 2. Um, uh, these are not in the, in what may be the final order because that's up to the moderator to determine. So, um, just understand, I just did it as they came in. Uh, this is the creation of a personnel bylaw. So right now we have a personnel code. The personnel code is, um, very outdated, to say the least, and in some instances, I believe reckless. Um, one in particular is that in like, the way that the code is now, there's nothing that constitutes what we call progressive discipline. So what happens was if someone has an infraction that they are either, uh, coached, uh, or suspended for or written up for and they don't have another infraction within a year, that goes away. And so effectively you could have a major issue once a year, every year, um, and it wouldn't impact your status. Um, I don't think it's our goal to make it harder for employees, but I, I do think that progressive discipline is a
Yep.
tool of the trade and has been for many years. So, um, there's some things to, to button up there. So I sent a very long, um, personnel policies and procedures manual to the board, um, which we can go over at another time. I know that I would imagine you would want to do that with all three of you here, so we can table that for another time. But effectively, this would strike what's there in the code, call out this as a personnel bylaw and then refer to all of those personnel policies and procedures. Those procedures can be updated, but most of them by an affirmative vote of the board with the exception of classification and compensation and pay, which has to be at town meeting every year. And so you know, the ability to hire and at what step and, uh, annual reviews and, you know, harassment policies, et cetera, would be part of the personnel policies and procedures. And just like Juneteenth became a holiday and we had to work that in, that would be something, you know, that will be an example of something that we can change without having to wait for town meeting or to change the code.
Question. Yes, Kate, please.
So procedurally, can you help me remember at what point does the board need to endorse the articles? Like a formal vote, is that necessary? I know we're doing a meeting, but do we need anything ahead of time?
On the, on the articles that you have here, um, that say select board that are not coming from you, so like my recommendation, tonight would be the night to say proceed. And then, um, and then on the 27th, you make your recommendation and they're, they're not mutually exclusive, so you could say proceed, but then.
And then on the 27th, it's not changing.
Yeah, and you could just say, you know what? This is not fully baked. I don't like it.
The 27th is when we say the select board recommends passage of town meeting.
Right. We just have this, this deadline here. Um.
Do you have a deadline for an endorsement from the board?
Maybe the 27th.
Well, yeah, for the recommendation. If the board doesn't want to pursue this, I need to know this evening whether I need to strike it.
I'm on the opposite. I want to make sure that you are getting in, in affirmative these things.
Well, we, as the majority of the board, can say we affirmatively believe we can continue with the personnel bylaw, which I think we should, myself. Um.
Yeah, I just, we're not whole tonight and I'm a little.
We are not.
Uh, that's why I used, opened with the procedurally, cause I mean, I would love to be whole when we do this, but we can't wait longer than we can wait.
I mean, it's a democracy for a reason. Um.
What would be the best service to you?
You could call a special, I, I need to know before we open our meeting on the 27th, what's on the warrant.
Yeah.
Is it, is it possi, uh, you need to know before the 27th, what's on the warrant?
She has to have a draft warrant ready for us to.
Cause the one that you're gonna approve is the warrant.
Right.
What's today's date?
Today is the 20th.
So if we wanted to have a special meeting, we need two days' notice unless it's an emergency. I mean.
Well, as luck would have it, we are meeting on Thursday. I don't know if you wanted to have the discussion beforehand, um.
So we, we can make a decision tonight if we want to act on these as a two-member board or if we want to meet until the night of the 27th or if we wanted something different.
So Kate, if.
You cannot wait till the 27th. The 27th is when you make your recommendation.
So if we green light all the ones that we would like that are on this packet tonight.
That are select board sponsored.
Select board ones, yeah, we're not, not gonna go to the others and say, put them on the warrant. We'll make a recommendation on the 27th. If by some, you know, quirk of fate, we read it and realize, oh my gosh, that's crazy. I don't want to do that. We can tell you to strike it on the 27th.
Yeah, I mean, if it's a select board article, then what we would say is the select board recommends no action and we just wouldn't call it.
Right, okay.
Okay, so then, so that was, so once the board is whole, we can take that action. So then procedurally, maybe it makes sense to kind of make decisions on these tonight?
Yeah, I, so my, my preference would be move them forward if, when the board is whole, um, and we can communicate to Ms. Turner to be, that this is the process and that we are moving them for the selective ones forward or not, whatever we decide tonight. And we'll have that opportunity to, to take them off on the 27th, but, um.
Would you like to see individuals or the warrant as a whole right now? Motion.
That's up to you all.
Yeah.
Maybe let's, what would you like to do?
Well, let's do.
Maybe individuals actually, because a lot of these aren't select board sponsored, so.
So let's do the, which is the, um.
Article 1. So I move to, what language would you like?
Um, Article 1 would go in anyway.
Yeah, that's the logic.
Are you showing the regional school district?
That one you, yeah.
Yeah.
So what language would you like to motion?
Vote to, um, vote to place the Article 2.
Why don't you call it the name of the, name of the article that's on article, cause it just changed the numbers.
I moved to place Article 2 to show the regional school district agreement on the town warrant as a select board article.
Second, uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay.
I move to place, uh, the creation of the town personnel bylaw on the warrant for the upcoming election. I'm sorry, for the upcoming, uh, warrant.
Uh, tell me. Um, second, uh, any discussion? All of us in favor?
Aye.
All right.
All right. So maybe we'll go one by one now.
Yeah, so Article 4 doesn't need a vote for inclusion necessarily because it's required. We're, we're gonna appropriate, uh, money from the revolving fund. So these are non-tax dollars. Um, Articles 5 and sit, Articles 5, I'm sorry, is the Water Enterprise Fund. Um, I'm waiting on the number from that and to hear from the, um. Oh, sorry. Okay, yep.
Well, thank you. I was reading on my screen.
I got my screen up.
Yeah, I apologize. Yep. So, uh, yep. So I'm waiting, um, on, uh, the superintendent has been away, so I'm just waiting on a final number for that, but suspect I will have that.
And that's just a recommendation from us. We don't need to put it on the warrant. That's just on.
You don't have to recommend this unless you'd like to. It's usually the Public Works Commission and Finance because Public Works doesn't fall under the select board.
Yes, copy. Okay. Next is.
Article 6 is accessory apartments. This is, um, planning board. Um, so Article 6 is the planning board.
Seven.
Seven is the planning board.
Article 8 is us.
Article 8. This is an interesting one. So Article 8 is something that I had been working on. Actually, it was the first thing that I did when I started here on day two, which was in a butterlot sales program. And the idea is that if there is a vacant lot that is non-buildable near in a butter that belongs to the town, it would, if it's in the town's best interest, we could sell that at whatever the valuation is to in a butter through the butterlot program. Um, other communities have done this. Um, what needs to happen after this is accepted at town meeting, if, if and when it is accepted at town meeting, is a subsequent article of town meeting needs to come back naming all of the parcels that would be appropriate and up for sale. So it doesn't mean that this passes and we just start selling off parcels at free random.
Right.
We come back with a listing and we then talk to town meeting again and say, these are the unbuildable onesies are where they are and we get permission from town meeting to sort of put them up for sale.
That's good.
Um, and so what you'll see later is that a citizen has a citizen's petition for the name of the article is the same, but the contents are a little, are a little different. I've talked to that individual, um, just to alert them of the fact that this exists and I believe they're, they're mulling it over whether they're gonna include it or not. So it's on here.
Okay.
Uh, up until the 26th.
Mr. Allison.
Why, why does this need a program?
Why does it need a program?
Why can't, why can't we just do it?
Um.
It has to be a process and.
There, yeah, because.
This is about its establishing guidelines and process for making sure it's done in every way. Okay.
Yeah, yeah. And I, I wanted to take the two steps. Okay, yeah, yeah, and I, I wanted to take the two-step, one, to make sure that this was something the community wanted to do before we go and have the assessors and the tax collector take the time and effort to basically aggregate all of those parcels.
We have forms for getting rid of desks that are town properties, we're just selling, we're selling land.
Most about the
We're going to sell the Prescott, that's next.
Most about the article is the guidelines for square fee, right? So it's not like you get, you know, no, no comments, no jokes needed. Okay, so I move to place on the warrant, the establishment of a butterlot sales program.
Second, any discussion? Hearing none.
Aye.
Aye, all set.
Article nine are, sometimes we refer to as Scrivener's Errors, this is a Planning Board sponsored, ooh, that went really crazy when I tried, I'm sorry. Whoever's watching at home probably has a headache. Okay.
Article 10.
Article 10, so this is almost a reboot of what was seen the very meeting prior to when I began, so, and I, I was at that meeting, and there's not a whole substantial difference here, other than this special legislation that was accepted at a special town meeting in March, it was March of '22. Went to the legislature and it never was passed through, it failed.
It didn't fail. It just didn't, wasn't acted on.
It didn't pass.
But it didn't fail, it just wasn't acted on. I'm just saying, it didn't, it wasn't like the legislature said, no, that's a terrible idea.
Well, you did let me finish. What I was going to say is not because the substance isn't reasonable, but because I think they just plain old ran out of time.
Right.
So one of the things that has
I mean, it failed. Just means it needs to be refiled.
But it didn't pass.
It didn't pass.
Okay, so it didn't pass.
It's not that binary in the legislative process, sadly.
Don't I know it? So, we're going to be bringing it back. The one hope that I had asked for, and I had a meeting with DKM on Thursday of last week, is we had a deadline of the 31st of December of this year, and through a whole series of reasons that we don't need to go into, we didn't get as far along in the process as I think folks thought. So through the Select Board's ask of me, I entered into an agreement, beginnings of an agreement with Mass Development. We're developing a memo of agreement, which will come back to the board for the board to sign. That will do a lot of the due diligence work, and that can happen at the same time as the legislation is moving through, so there are parallel tracks, knowing that we have our legislators blessing on this, and they're excited about it. And then the idea would be to use that to then enact this, which is basically we receive it from DKM for a dollar and then go through the, the sale partnership program. So I had asked for them to extend it, they would not extend it another year, they will extend it, well, they'll contemplate extending it for six months. So I asked until June 30th of FY '24, and it didn't seem insurmountable. The issue is that they have holding costs associated with the property that are not insignificant, and they're building a building for the surplus property office to relocate out of there to another office, and once that happens, the whole campus will be completely vacant, and the state doesn't want to have the holding costs. But neither does the town of Lancaster.
That's something we can talk something about.
Yes, so I asked for six more months, because I think it'll get us farther along.
So this article is just a redo of that article to keep
With those caveats.
Keep the ball moving down the field.
I move to place on the warrant, special legislation, DKM parcel conveyance.
Second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next.
Okay, so Article 11 is step one of a very lengthy, multi-step process. I included a memo regarding a, what's called a senior means tested tax exemption program. There's quite a few communities in the Commonwealth that have, have done this. I wouldn't say it's a great number, we're probably talking about a dozen, but essentially what it is, is the ability for a town to set up a fund that is a special revenue account, it can be interest-bearing, that money is deposited into by some means that the community sets. So some folks have a surcharge on property sales of, say, a quarter of a percent, that money comes to the town, and that money is then placed into this different fund. Some people have it like CPA does, where it's a surcharge on your taxes. My advocacy, at least to begin with, would be that we have a Tax Fairness Committee, look at all of the different options, decide what's best, knowing that it has to be revisited every three years anyway. And the idea would be to take money from, if and when we have more development, to take a certain amount of that revenue, whatever it is that the community decides, $100,000, $250,000, put it in this account. The account can then be accessed by persons over the age of 65 who have lived in town in an owner-occupied home for at least 10 years, and are meeting the median income levels that are designated by the state. They apply with a social worker, so that's a key component to this, is that it's, it's managed by, by the assessors in theory and the social worker in practice, so it is confidential. And then the social worker helps them, whomever it is, access the state circuit breaker funds, and if they basically are able to obtain circuit breaker funds, they're able to be part of this program. And then depending on how much is allocated every year, you'll see it, like we do with the revolving accounts, we would appropriate $200,000, say, from the fund, and that would be what would be available. It can go to five people, it can go to 12 people, it can go to no people. But the idea is that that money does not roll into the general fund, and it is kept separate, and it is a balance that is separate that if we don't need it, it just builds up over time. So the first part of this is to establish a Tax Fairness Committee of persons that will study this, and basically come back, and I gave you in the memo an outline of a sample of what, what the means tested parameters could be, but they could have something that's, you know, but basically the parameters have to be there, there are 10 things that I said you have to qualify for, those are standard. So those are the standards to be able to qualify, and so it really is a means tested.
Yep. Now, I think it's, I mean, it's something you and I talked about right when I joined the board, was trying to find a way to lower the tax cost for seniors who don't really access a ton of town services, but have, you know, lived in their house for, you know, decades, if not generations, and pricing them out of their home just seems like a horribly cruel thing to do. And finding a way to, they still do some town services, so making sure they pay some taxes, but looking at that sort of sliding fee of the means test, I think is a fantastic opportunity for those in the town who really, really need it, and sadly, there are an awful lot of families in town who would be able to avail themselves of this. So I'm, I'm thrilled that, that we're moving this forward, and the Tax Fairness Committee, as I've said to you before, I think makes all the sense in the world, as the first step to get this ball rolling down the field.
I move to place on the warrant, the establishment of a Tax Fairness Committee in the Lancaster.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All set. Now, what's next?
Article 12, but since the chief is here, would you like to? And that'll give me a chance to
Article 12?
I don't have an Article 12 in my packet.
I don't have an Article 12 in my packet.
We don't have an Article 12 in our packet.
That's right, it's new, remember I said there was going to be new ones?
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
There it is.
And there it is.
As promised.
But that's why it's highlighted.
There we go.
So this would be a special legislation, as everyone knows, in Massachusetts, police and firefighters have to retire at the age of 65, unless we do the special legislation. One of my senior members, Stephen Hilliger, has turned 65 in May.
A former Select Board member.
Yes, and he would like to stay on the department. Steve is physically and mentally capable of doing the job, and at a point in time where we have a hard time retaining staff and getting more staff, I would like to put this forward, so we can keep Steve on for a few more years.
And this is specific just to Steve Hilliger?
Yes.
Thoughts, questions, comments, concerns?
Only that this one requires that you all decide if you're going to be the sponsors of this.
Yeah.
Okay, well, so that gets rid of
Well, I, we're deciding that, I suppose.
Yeah, so I'll make a motion to place on the warrant, right, and this is, you know, go on the warrant for the residents to vote on. Absolutely, I would like the residents to have an opportunity to vote on this, so I'd like to place on the warrant, special leg
Legislation firefighter age exemption.
I can't get rid of it, there it is.
I'd like to make a motion to place on the warrant, special legislation firefighter age exemption.
Second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Oh, wait, we're in the middle of a motion. Go ahead, go ahead.
You're going to have to redo it.
Why?
Because, remember I said, because I don't have the sponsor listed, you have to say yes to Select Board as sponsor.
That's what he said, didn't he?
No.
I, I would like to remove my motion, withdraw my motion.
Yeah, motion withdrawn.
Let's say it.
Select Board sponsor.
The Select Board will sponsor Article 12, and as such, will
The Select Board will sponsor special legislation firefighter age exemption to be placed on the warrant.
Second, any further discussion between the two of us? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Thank you.
Congratulations, chief, thank you. And
This was a citizen's petition, also not in your packet, it just came in today.
Heard about this, yeah.
So this is a citizen's petition to amend the Lancaster recall bylaw by striking the entirety of Section 1 and replacing it with the red, which says, "An act providing the recall elections in the town of Lancaster, be it enacted by the Senate and House of Representatives, General Court, by the authority of same as follows: A holder of an elected or appointed office in the town of Lancaster who has been indicted for felony, convicted", I think it's supposed to say
It's got, well, an indict, so we're not allowed to change it?
Right, this is, yeah. Convicted of a misdemeanor or against, I think, whom a finding or reasonable cause of violation of the Code of Ethics has been made by the Massachusetts State Ethics Commission, or in a case whereby there was willful misuse, converted or misappropriated without authority public property or public funds entrusted to or associated with the elected or appointed office, to which the official is slash has been elected or appointed, may be recalled from office by the registered voters of the town as provided in this act. So I will have a, I have to reach out
Yeah.
Just to make sure that we're amending this to have it read with the intent that I think it does, plus some of the clerical errors, so.
Indicted has a C in it.
Oh, yeah.
So question, that doesn't change any of the percentages?
No, not for that election.
For the recall?
No.
So it's 10% of the registered voters is what required to initiate the
Seems the only change she's making is Section 1.
The only change is in Section 1, which is basically, it used to say, any holder can be recalled for any reason by the voters, and this is proposing reasons.
I would like to move on this, can you scroll back up?
Well, so I would say
It's a citizen's petition.
We have no motion to make. So for the, the public to understand, any group of 100 or more citizens who are registered voters, huh?
Twelve.
Twelve? Oh, it's 100 for the special, so any group of 12 citizens or more can write up and submit a citizen's petition for consideration at the annual town meeting, so we don't have any act to take on it.
But the, so the endorsement would be on the 27th, if you choose to do that?
The 27th.
Okay, sorry, that's the direction I was going.
Well, so this is a policy decision based on what seems to be a fractured pattern of whether the Select Board takes positions on citizen's petitions. Some years they did, other years they didn't.
Yeah. My, well, my concern with items like this is, being a member of the Government Reform Committee, issues like this should be addressed as a structural piece for government reform, but it's a citizen's petition, and we have that process, so.
So it sounds like you need to reach out to council and get some feedback, and then we can
I think you should reach out to the petitioner, right?
I'm reaching out to petitioner, but I, I can tell you that it's a policy decision whether the Select Board will be taking, will be making recommendations on citizen's petitions, and it likely should be a policy decision that should remain, unless there's some compelling reason that it doesn't.
Remain as long as the board remains, I suppose, because it's
Well, see, now that's, and that's where it gets tricky, because if, if there's a policy, but then it's a non-policy every year that someone changes, that gets tricky. So I don't know if this wants to be the year that you're all setting it, but it makes it difficult for someone in my position to not have the idea of, does the Select Board provide recommendations on citizen's petitions?
I guess my, the spirit of this is, is sounds, sounds strong, and that's what I wanted to comment on.
Okay.
Okay, so, I guess you don't have to decide tonight, but you'll have to let me know if you're going to take, make a recommendation on it.
Yes.
Okay, another citizen's petition, which I alluded to earlier, which is the butterlot sales program. This is written differently, would you like me to read it? People who can, so, "Petition the town of Lancaster and the Lancaster Select Board to, I'm sorry, selectmen, to establish an butterlot sales program. The butterlot sales program has been established in many Massachusetts communities and is allowed by the state to permit this town to sell small parcel of land without going through the auction process. The butterlot sales program has been established to facilitate the sale of town old parcels of land acquired by foreclosure to property owners with a home or a building directly abutting the parcel. The goal would be to allow the property owners a chance to acquire a vacant parcel, improve their current parcel, and encourage private ownership and maintenance of land not suitable for development. This petition recommends using the Town of Littleton Plan, called the butterlot sales program, as a template for the Town of Lancaster program. This plan has been vetted, I think, and is in us in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and other communities, and I'm pretty sure that was is in use." So again, I will be
That seems to, his seems to, this petitioner seems to be focused only on foreclosed properties. I'm assuming our program is broader.
I would, yes, and I also think that our program should state that owners of vacant lots does not count.
Right.
So you can't buy, you don't want to buy a vacant lot and another vacant lot, and then all of a sudden
Right, you get a big
So it would have to be a lot with
With a dwelling or
With a structure or
Yeah, okay, but we don't make a recommendation yet on this.
Well, you may, but regardless, you don't have to do, there's no action this evening.
Article 15?
Article 15 is the Community Preservation Committee's budget, and that's being reviewed by council, I just received it today.
Was that, do we sponsor that?
No, the CPC does.
So Select Board there.
Oh, well, it shouldn't.
Okay.
Sorry, thank you. And so Article 16 is going to be their projects, I just haven't received that yet, but I will. Ooh.
Uh-oh.
There we go. Article 17 is a citizen's petition to increase the membership of the Select Board in Lancaster. It's pretty long, I don't think you necessarily need me to read this whole thing.
The gist is to move from three to five.
The gist is to go from three to five, and then outlines the path forward to do that.
Yes. Now, at this point, I think, how many more articles do we have to review?
One, I think eighteen's the last one.
Wage schedule, okay. Is there a motion to add the wage schedule to the warrant?
Ah, yep, and then the wage schedule is the last one, which you actually don't, this is also, has to go in.
I know, yeah, but do we have to vote, just because even though it has to go in?
You can, but you don't have to.
I'd like to make a motion to place on the warrant
Two more motions. And I second it.
Are you done?
Yeah.
To place the unclassified wage schedule on the warrant.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, back to the question of whether or not we take policy decisions on citizen's petitions. I do think we need a clear answer on it, and sooner rather than later, I'm glad to discuss it now, I'm sure our colleague will have an opinion on it, but my view is that the people elect us to be Select Board members, to help lead the community, and help guide them in decisions that they make, and so I feel like citizen's petitions are an area in which we should, since they're affecting the town, we should be weighing in, either individually or as a board, with a policy recommendation of yes or no.
I'm in complete agreement, not everybody has all of the information we do and depend on us to be able to help educate on all of these items.
Yeah.
We are intimate in the inner workings of the town on a regular basis.
So I don't know, Kate, if it's helpful to you for us to vote to determine that we will take positions as a board now, or would you rather us wait until we're a full board?
If you're gonna do that, there's, there's a select board policies or procedures manual circulating somewhere that existed before us. I guess I would vote to amend that to include it.
Okay.
So why don't you let me get my hands on the electronic version of that?
And then you'll have that prepared for us on the 27th or something, okay, great. Fantastic. Anything else? Yes, sir. Oh, you're scratching your head. I was so ready to help you. Call on you. Um, all right. Well, that was exciting, wasn't it? Um, we discussed that, we discussed that, we discussed that, we discussed that. Ah, we are down to communications and then public comment. So, let's review, Emma, are we? Yes?
I think so.
So, real quick on communications, um, we have a, um, budget forum this coming Thursday, March 23rd at 6:00 PM? What is it?
6:00 PM.
6:00 PM. In, are we just deciding the Dexter Room?
You sure did.
Dexter Room at the Thayer Memorial Library, thank you, Mr. Millet, and to the trustees. Um, then on the 27th of March at noon time, Zoom only meeting, um, a special select board meeting to button up warrant article issues. Um, the next regular meeting will not be a regular meeting, it'll be a special meeting on Wednesday, April 5th, um, starting at 6:00 PM. It will be hybrid as well, so in the, in the agenda it says the 3rd, but it'll be April 5th. Uh, and then we have, um, just for communications, a finance committee has a meeting tomorrow night at, uh, 6:15, Zoom only. Uh, and then covered that. The warrant review meeting, do we need to pick a date for that now?
I was hoping, um, but it can, it can wait, it definitely doesn't have to happen.
Yeah, I think we should.
Probably an April thing, so.
Yeah, so April, let's talk about it, yeah.
I just want enough time to tell folks.
Absolutely, yeah. Uh, and then annual town meeting reminder is May 3rd, 2023, starting at 7:00 PM, uh, Mary Rollins Elementary and/or Luther Burbank, well, and potentially adding Luther Burbank, and the annual town election seven weeks from today, May 8th, 2023. At this point, we will go to public comment. Um, as most of you who are familiar with the public comment, um, I usually admonish the, um, folks to be kind to each other, um, be respectful to each other, uh, and, uh, suggest that at the discretion of the chair, I would stop you if you were not being kind or respectful to each other. The Supreme Judicial Court and my favorite president, John Adams, uh, when he wrote our constitution in 1780, determined that, um, in a case in Southborough, uh, last month, I believe, um, that, uh, you can be as mean as you'd like, apparently. Um, and, um, I have nothing to say about it, um, which is fine.
You have nothing to say about that.
I have lots to say about the ruling, but I can't stop you from being as mean as you'd like. Um, I would still encourage people, uh, to not be mean, uh, and to be kind and realize that we're all in this together as citizens. Um, but, uh, but sadly, the Supreme Judicial Court in a, in a, a majority, like not just a majority, a unanimous ruling, um, sided with John Adams, um, who we got out of, but a little off on that, yes.
It's my understanding that we can, the board can choose to not have public comment and that's legal.
We can, yes. Yeah, and I would, that, public comment is, um, um, a benefit we as a board provide to the town. Uh, it's a benefit to us too, to hear from townsfolk. Uh, what we are gonna try, try to start with is, um, shortening public comment a little bit, um, to a couple of minutes. Um, I'll be a little bit more, um, I'll use a little more discretion on timing, um, but I will cap it at two minutes. That way, if everybody decides to be terribly mean to each other, we just have to listen to that for two minutes at a time. So, uh, and as is our practice, anyone in the room who wants to be heard, go to the podium first and then we go to those, try not to trip, um, and then we go to folks online, uh, and you have to state your name and your address, um, to be recognized. Ralph.
Ralph Gifford, 861 George Hill Road. Appreciate the presentations this evening, thank you. I want to speak to the people who are not here to speak for themselves, and those are the people who will have to go without medications because of an increased tax bill, people who will go without food due to that, people who will have to forego clothing purchases, make really hard life decisions. And I know, because I have served in government before, that everybody here is also concerned about that, and I appreciate that. Our police department, if they weren't concerned about people, they wouldn't be in that job. Same thing for the fire department. The library cares about people, that's obvious. So the question I want to ask is, how did we get here and how can we avoid it in the future? Now, the federal government, when they do their budgeting, they do a 10-year projection. They project way ahead. Uh, at least one town in Massachusetts that I'm aware of does anywhere from a three to five-year projection ahead. And this is something that I believe if we were to implement, we could look further down the road. What does that get us? When you see further down the road, you can see the small changes that you can make that avoid catastrophe. If we had made small changes four, five years ago, we wouldn't be in the dire situation we're in today. So we need to be able to look further ahead. The further ahead, this is kind of a vision thing, the further ahead we can see, the better off we will be. Okay? Now, I know my two minutes is about up, I would like, later, I have some questions for Chief Hansen if I have some time.
I can ask you, you can have some questions anytime you want, any day of the week.
I will happily do that. And I, I would love to see us adopt that kind of a three or five-year look at it.
So I, I, if it's okay with you, I have a question. So I worked in the federal government for a long time. Um, uh, uh, do you know the last time the federal government passed a budget? Do you know, out of curiosity?
Uh, well, they have to pass one every.
No, they don't.
Well, they, they do a deferred and deferred.
The last time the federal government passed a budget, which is go through every, there are 12 or 13 appropriations bills covering all of government expenditures, 12 or 13 authorization bills that says, this is how you can spend those dollars. Do you know the last time they did that detailed work that the equivalent at local level that Kate and the department head did here this year, the last time?
I don't.
Take a guess.
Uh, well, uh, if I were to guess, I would guess three years ago, based on what you said.
You would be off by 23 years. 1997 was the last time the federal government.
But they still do 10-year projections.
The Congressional Budget Office does, but the, and then the legislators tend to ignore them. But my point is, it's a, it sounds great. And I, and I, the concept of looking forward, which is why we do long-term capital planning, things like that, I, it makes a lot of sense. I would just caution folks, um, not to use the federal government as an example, because they haven't done it since, uh, 1997.
I accept that.
Yes, yeah. So, yes.
Could I, just to build this budget and decide on that, and I can't speak to what was done in the past, um, and I'm happy to talk about this with you at greater length when you're available. Um, we actually have those projections, so.
Oh, wonderful.
They exist because how do you decide what is gonna be the number that you don't have to then come back to the well? So we have those for the first time, at least in the last decade, both at the capital level and, um, now, there's some assumptions in there for revenue projections, but effectively Cheryl's been working on that for many months now. And, um, and so we, we have that. And just to quickly, how we got here, we haven't had a balanced budget since, uh, 2016. So even though we haven't had to have an override and Lancaster primarily has been able to go through unless somebody was, you know, really paying attention, you know, fairly unscathed, it's because we used all of the reserves. And as much as I know people want to point to certain things in the government, it really is that we have families with schoolchildren and the cost of education is going up every year. So you take something like Minuteman, they have 10 more students than they had the year prior at $31,000 and an additional $64,000 to bus them. You have.
$400,000.
And it, and with increasing by 200,000, so.
I'm speaking from experience.
No, 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 I, I know.
I know the further ahead I can look when I'm making a decision, the better my decisions are.
All right, is anybody else in the room? Okay, we're gonna go to George France. George, you've got two minutes?
You got it. Thank you, Mr. Cheryl. Um, I certainly agree with the, uh, oh, the 13 Highfield Drive in Lancaster. I agree with the Senate Speaker. Um, going back maybe five years ago, I, I remember Stan Starr sitting in your chair and, and telling the people of Lancaster, folks, if we don't get the revenue for this town jacked up, we are gonna be in serious problems because we're not gonna be able to fund programs. So it isn't as if there was no warning whatsoever, but there's an old saying, if you plant ice, you're gonna harvest wind. So here we are, you know, these years later and, and unable, um, to really meet the obligations, uh, or the desires of, of our citizens. So what do we do about that? Well, as a member of the planning board, I think it's incumbent on us to do a couple of things. Yeah, we need to look further out, we need to, to, to really, uh, try to focus on those projects that will be increased revenue for the town. And that will, that will certainly be one of my, um, charges, uh, in our work on the planning board. And, and lastly, um, the idea of, of having, um, a budget forum in the library, all due respect to my friends at the library, I don't think the room will hold the number of people that we're gonna get. Because, you know, the fact that there's so few people on the meeting tonight is partly due to the fact that we had broken links to the meeting and it was difficult to get in. Uh, but I think there's gonna be a lot of folks who are interested in trying to attend that meeting. And so I, I just respectfully suggest that we consider a larger venue. Thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you, George. Uh, Wyn Clark. State your name and address, you got two minutes.
Uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Wyn Clark, 928 Mead Street. I have a procedural question, if that's okay, not a, not a comment.
Sure.
Um, just real, I know Kate said that the, uh, the order of, um, items on the warrant was not yet defined. How, if, if I wanted to advocate for, um, placement of a warrant, you know, sooner in the meeting, would I, would I go through you all or through the moderator?
Uh, well, the warrant itself is developed by the select board, it's our warrant. Um, so I suppose you could advocate to us. Um, I think what she was correctly on, Ron Kate, but the, the moderator, it's his meeting, it's our warrant, but it's his meeting, so he can take the articles in any order in which he wishes.
There can be a motion to.
Oh, I see, okay.
So they could, yeah, as Jason just said, you could move to take Article 7 out of order, you could, there's, you can, it's his determination, um, as the moderator of the meeting, but we determine it because it's our warrant.
Does he have a special request?
Do you have a request that you want to share with us now, or do you want to reach out to Kate afterward? It's fine, either way.
Uh, I, uh, I'm on the CPA committee. Um, I would advocate for the, the CPA warrant to come sooner, uh, certainly because there are, um, projects on there that, that are, you know, younger families will want to know about them. I wouldn't want to see a lot of young families with children having to leave the meeting if it goes late.
Sure. All right.
And I was thinking, just for clarity, like, all of the budgetary articles would be sort of in a row.
In a row.
So like the class and comp is way at the bottom because it was the last thing I did today, but it would be, so I, I think, well, I can't say because it's not my warrant, but I would think that that would be more than reasonable.
We can't say where it would go, but we hear you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Wyn. Um, Kendra Dickinson, put her hand down.
No, I put it down prematurely, I'm sorry, I'd still like to speak.
You were assuming we were gonna call on you. Um, Kendra Dickinson, name and address, please, you have two minutes.
Kendra Dickinson, 42 Open Way, speaking as a private citizen. I just want to thank everybody who worked on this budget, it's super transparent, you guys are willing to talk about anything, and I trust Kate's 20 years of experience in municipal government and Cheryl Garope's history in serving this community, that, yes, there's gonna be human errors that happens no matter what you do, but this was the most transparent budget I'm told that has historically showed up in Lancaster, so I can't give enough kudos for you.
Thank you.
My second comment is, I find it disappointing that there is things that the government study committee are supposed to evaluate, and they're important things, and there's a list of things, and that process should be followed. Some people are referring to the government study committee as that's where things go to die, and I don't think that that's correct. And the citizen's petition for the select board, granted, I do agree it should go from three to five, it needs to follow the correct process. And I know there's other items on the town's radar that could be coupled with that and be addressed appropriately and go through the correct process. So I, I would be disappointed, I'm disappointed in the person who in, put in the petition, because he's circumventing the whole process for his own needs. Um, but I would really appreciate you guys, you know, seriously considering setting a solid policy for whether you are gonna get involved in promoting citizen's petitions or you're not, because I've heard from several residents that historically, a certain town administrator decided that, you know, you can choose what you want, but there needs to be clarity so that folks can understand there's no underhanded stuff going on.
Agreed. Your, your time's up. Thank you, Kendra, appreciate it. Uh, Jay Moody. Name and address, you have two minutes. I'll wait till you unmute. There you go. You're all set.
Okay. Jay Moody, 124 St. bridge Road. Um, I, I, I don't think anybody likes the idea of an override, but, uh, the town got into a position, as George said, you know, it'd be nice to have, standing it up there and said, we need more, or, uh, commercial money and more taxes. But you have to get a town administrator who agrees with that and goes out and does it. We did that, we hired Kate, and I think she's done a fabulous job bringing out the financial parts of the town and where we are. We didn't know where we were. And yes, it should be looked at ahead of time. I think that Dick Trussell and the, the finance committee have been trying to do that too, to look ahead. So I, I think we're on the right track and I'd hate to lose some of the people that we've gained, because we've got some good people, I think. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moody. Appreciate it. Um, back up to bat again. Oh, no, Wyn Clark's just clapping, okay. Um, all right, well, that ends public comment and.
That was very nice.
That was a lovely public comment. Let's keep that now total free-for-all public comment thing going, uh, not yell at each other. Um, uh, okay, with that, there's nothing else on the agenda.
No, sir.
Move to a chair.
Second, any discussion?
Well, I don't think I have anything else to talk about.
All right, well, I don't think so either.
Your hair looks really nice today.
Oh, my God, thank you. I got a haircut after two months. Um, all right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Have a good night.